Committee to order, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live board meetings online at tcaps.net/board. Recorded meetings may also be viewed on demand at the same address. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. Kelly, do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. First one is Gail Lampfing. My apologies, or, and topic Indigenous Ed.
Great. So individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak during public comment and shall be limited to three minutes each. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 2504.
My name is Gail Lampfing, and I'm here as an interested citizen, but also a member of the Presbyton Church Racial Justice Working Group. And we worked with Holly Byrd a lot on different issues. And one particular issue was the, and I hope I learned to pronounce this right, Mondonggenen Resource Manual, which was written by five Anishinaabe women. And it has been out there with blessings from the State Department of Education since 2022. So I'm here to learn more about the process of the curriculum committee here. And also, we have talked to staff people at TCAP. So in Holly's memory, and because we all want on our committee, and hopefully thousands of others want everyone to have a view of the true history of the Indigenous people of this area. So thank you so much for the work you do, and I look forward to learning more.
Next is Sophia Hoag. Topic is credit hours.
Hi, I'm Sophia Hoag. I'm a student at West Senior High, and I'm just a little concerned with credit hours. So I have, I have already completed all my four math credits. I took Calc BC this year, and I will be earning credit for that. But I am aware that as a junior, there is a half a credit I have to take. But I guess I'm just wondering why that would be necessary when I've already gone above and beyond for math credit hours. And I know there are a couple other students in my situation who may be, who may have taken the AP Calculus class, but they may not be able to earn credit to continue on to Calc III at NMC. So they may not want to take an additional math class, like AP Statistics or Personal Finance. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we can move on to our procedural items. First up, our draft committee meeting minutes from April 29th. Are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes? Then hearing no changes, the minutes will remain as posted, and we can move on to our TCAP's district course catalog for what were the minutes of this school year 2024 and 2025. Ms. Oden?
Yep, we have no new courses that we've added this month. So it's just a standing memo, a placeholder for that.
Okay, then we'll, we'll keep that on consent agenda for the next full board meeting. And moving on to informational items, we have our monthly board curriculum learning series, so I will defer to our chief academic officers.
Yeah, great. So we have two topics today we want to talk to you about and share some work we've done. Our first topic is our professional development for our teaching staff for next year. And we have two guests with us here, two of our great teachers. Chandra West, who is not only an elementary teacher for the district, she also serves as a president for our TCEA Union. And Ben Zener, who teaches up at West Senior High, and I think is the, oh, you're not the vice president. You're almost the vice president. And so we work with these guys and some of our other teacher leaders and principals as we develop our professional development. So we wanted to bring them here, thinking that you guys might have questions for them about what's important for our teachers when they have their professional development, and how are we meeting their needs, and what other things could we be doing as a district too? So we'll start with a little bit of just an overview as we sit down and think about our professional development plans. Dan and I, you know, we're former teachers, so we always think about end in mind, right? What do we want at the end of the year for our teachers to feel like they've had some focused time to grow and develop? How is that related to best practice about teaching and learning? Lots of research out there. And how is it, and Dan and I have talked a lot about staying narrow and focused and trying to not put a whole board of lots of options that sometimes means nothing really gets movement and traction. But how do we really stay coherent and focused on something that we know connects to the work our teachers are already doing? So days available, you'll see there, it's sort of, that's throughout the calendar, it within their contract, they have time that's developed for professional development. The state does require us to provide at least 30 hours of what we call DPBD, Development Hours, which we go a little bit above and beyond that as a district. We also have some required training through like a bloodborne pathogens and some seclusion and restraints. There are some of those requirements that our staff has to have as well, in addition to instructional development too.
Yeah, and I think our goal here is, you know, just as far as available time is, is that this is within the school day. We find that professional development after school is taxing. It's hard after teaching a full day to come in and ask for more. So to try to get as much as this within the school day as possible, which I think we've done, I think is important.
Yeah, and so I, the next, sort of briefly touched on these six here. This is sort of what we're looking for when we start to roll out our plan and work with our different groups to prioritize our time together. I, you know, that number six is sort of like, has to be in there, right? It's not everyone's favorite, but we want to make sure that we are hitting the compliance that we have to from the state.
Yeah, are those mandatory trainings, like the bloodborne pathogens, are those annual?
They are annual trainings, yep.
So how many of those are there? How much time do they take up?
I think it's, it's up to six hours now. So what we've done is we've taken our early release days. I believe we have nine of those, and five of those are used for PLCs. And then the remaining of those can fulfill those hours of those, those trainings.
And then this next slide here just gives you a little bit more detail as to how that time breaks out and what some of those focuses look like. The one biggest difference we have between secondary and elementary is, and it's based on the number of conferences they have with parents, which sounds like a strange thing, but that's another variable in there, is that our secondary staff have two meetings per month with their building, and our elementary staff have one meeting per month after school.
Yeah, so I, I had previewed this slide, so thank you very much for sharing those with us in advance. I just have a question about the process that you all used to get here, because it sounds like, you know, you've really taken a thoughtful approach with evaluating what you've done in the past and then getting the input of teachers this year. So I wondered if you could just give us a little bit more background and context of what were we doing, you know, in the years up until now? How will next year be different timewise?
I would, I would say it's similar timewise. Dan, you can jump in.
Well, I think that the biggest difference is, I mean, there's a lot of differences, but I think, first of all, getting that teacher work time on August 26th, in my mind, and speak also. Because I've said through, this is year 28 in TCAPs, so I've been through several August dates, right, as far as really great PD and PD that wasn't so great. And so obviously, that experience helps build it. But I know as a teacher, or even as administrator, right, when you start off that first day with PD, and we used to do, in previous years, we had a half-day Monday paid, Tuesday, Wednesday with professional development, and then Thursday was the teacher work day. So in your mind, and then we have open houses happening in elementary even before the teacher work day. So you're sitting there in PD, you know, stressing somewhat about, you know, classroom stuff, everything you got to do, getting ready for open houses, and then that Thursday is your open house, and then, I mean, the Thursday is your, your work day. So just kind of, it started, I think, with calendar, right? Once we started to look at the calendar, kind of remove that Monday out there, and then rebuild how that week in August works was kind of what was, was the start.
Yeah, and so the orange font is all district level professional development. So you'll see like that falls on that, that Wednesday, and then we kind of hit, we hit again during that RSDD, which is our November 4th day, and then you see it secondary, they're going to carry that same theme. And so I have been talking to some of the secondary teacher leaders about what content area instructional focus would be beneficial for your group. For instance, math has been working really hard on these vertical, non-permanent surfaces. And so they've done a book study, study the last few years, so we're bringing in an expert in that, right? And so how do we enhance that in their math-specific practice? I know Brittany Kay is working with the ELA teachers in secondary on vocabulary. That's been a weakness that we've seen in our student achievement data. And so she's been working on, who could we bring in as a, as an expert in that area that would enhance and provide our teachers with some new strategies or more intentionality around some of that? Our social studies teachers have been doing the DBQ, and so I've been talking to some people who help lead up that in the nation, and how do we bring them in to enhance something our teachers are already doing? The other thing that Dan and I have really talked about is there's tons of great work going on, and we don't need to necessarily chase something new and shiny over here. We can talk to our teachers and figure out, like, what is it that they've been doing that they think we could get a little bit better and be a little more focused about? And then how do we bring in an expert in that area to highlight and strengthen that? So, and then the green font is all of your building focuses. So each of our principals are working with their leadership teams on, you know, what is our building specifically at? I know a lot of the elementaries are working together on that. I know our high schools in particular are working a lot on some grading practices. So all three of the high schools and the middle schools are using some of the same research and same books, and so they'll see some of that woven throughout their professional development for their teachers.
So would those building-focused professional development days be aligned with their school improvement plans? Can you give us a couple of examples?
Yeah, so like this year, the middle schools focused on academic conversation. Both of the middle schools did. But how that looked played out a little bit different based on, you know, Mr. Ranger and Ms. Studeman and their leadership team. But they were using the same research and using the same ideas, so they could share and they can collaborate, but at the same time, they can say, okay, based on our building and where we're at, this is how we're going to use that. So they were, you know, teaching their staffs different prompts that they could use, different ways to support the academic conversation. And then when they did some of their instructional rounds visits, they observed that, and they had some feedback around that. But for secondaries, I think all five of them are now on board, where they're going to work with grading practices, really on how are we measuring what students know and are able to do in a way in which builds up the confidence of our learners and provides them opportunity to think about, what do I still need to demonstrate in this course to show that I'm on my way for mastery? So they're all sort of using the same, right now, they're all reading it as administrators. And I think then they'll pull that to their leadership teams and decide, like, who leads this session, right? Sometimes it's not the building principal, sometimes it makes sense for it to be the building principal. We have different teacher leaders in different buildings who feel comfortable or have a desire to lead some of the professional development, and we, we want to honor that when it, when it's appropriate too.
And for elementary, it was, I mean, the PLCs were not as far as building-focused. It was more of a district lens around science of reading. So, and then there was some also, a lot of one-off PD that we kind of filled space with, with the PD plan coming into the year. So that's what we're hoping to do, is make it more focused. As Jesse said, we don't like the flash in the pan necessarily, but we thought it was important with the science of reading and working with the reading league to build that strong foundation as we started to move into CKLA. PD was virtual during most times, so it wasn't, I don't think, the most engaging. I think the information was good, but I think it's, we're definitely not going to be doing that next year. Our PLCs are going to be in elementary more like true PLCs, working specifically around explicit instruction. A lot of, a lot of the work the past couple of years have been with the opportunities to respond for kids in class. I think we're going to move towards that I do, we do, you do, and focus more on the kids doing the work in the, in the small group and getting more of that. As Jesse mentioned, with the idea of academic conversation, getting the kids processing information more.
I have a question. Do you ever also do special topics? There've been a couple of big reports that have come out nationally, and it seems like those would be great discussion points for some of the teachers. Not that you necessarily do your classroom planning around them, but to be aware of. And the ones I'm thinking of were the Surgeon General's report that came out on cell phone. That information is very valuable, and I think should be sort of like a baseline of discussion. And the recent report, I've started winning my way through the, what is it, the Maha Report, looking at what kids may be facing in terms of influence that will affect their learning, their attention spans. And it actually is a fascinating report. I wasn't quite sure what that was going to look like. I've made it through half of it, but it's, it's good. It's going to affect the nation. The other thing, speaking to one of the questions that came in from the audience, is I'd like to think that there was a place for discussion on how to weave some of these history curriculum together. The current Indigenous curriculum I've looked at, I, I think it's important, but how it weaves in is important so that it's an accurate, full, fair, because it's going to be some good things on both sides of where there was conflict and some bad things on both sides where there was conflict. And so a discussion of conflict can also come out of that. So those are more general topics besides test scores, but they're being aware of what's going on in your country and how they're influencing kids. I don't think that you're teaching the same kids as to what they were when, when I was in school or before World War II. I think the audience of the student population was very, very different. And so we keep thinking we're going to get similar scores, you know, as if that was a constant we've accepted in our global universe. But there's so many other factors too to be aware of. So I'm just bringing that up. And do you ever do anything like special topics, even if teachers come in on their own time, that you think would be interesting to them, you know?
This year, the PD we did a special topic was AI. So that could be a learning series we could think about from year to year as far as the special topics, and we did time sheet with that. This time is so finite, right, as, as far as how much time we have with teachers and our, and the idea of our, you know, Jesse and I have been committed to that tier-one instruction and how important that is and to stay focused on that. And with elementary, continue to look at the reading piece and making connections with the social studies.
But yeah, I can understand why your required PD is very much focused on that. I do understand that. But I keep thinking there's some very serious topics that are out there, and I'd like to think that our teachers were on top of it, you know, because their interests, they'll affect all of us.
I would definitely say, I think there are a lot of the teachers that I communicate with regularly share articles back and forth. And I know a lot of our secondary, and Dan reviews the elementary internal communications, they share our articles like that a lot to their staff and engage them in thinking and discussions. I think that, that kind of what we're focusing on here, as Dan said, like the tier-one instruction, is time is, is very limited, and it's not a bad idea to do a different special series next year for some of those topics. I'd love to open it up to Ben and Chandra and let them talk a little bit about, as teachers, both of them with the district for a while, you know, what professional development has been impactful for them in their practice, and what have they found that teachers saw a lot of benefit in, and how can we do more of that as a district?
I don't know if I need it on, but I'll turn it on. Okay. I guess for me, like, I've been around for what, like 20 years? And for me, the, the most relevant PD is the stuff that has like through lines, right? And we've stuck with and we backed. Now, that's been few and far between, right? The one I'm thinking of is like the reading apprentice, apprenticeship, remember that stuff? That was like 2010, 2011, and it was solid. It was good training, right? It was like 10 days of PD that we went to. We went, right? We were together, right? That we went to, and then it stuck around for like a couple years. So we had this time in the groups was around that theme. So I would love, I would, and most would love, right, this idea of if we can find some of these common themes, whatever it may be, and then we stick with it. Because there tends to be a theme, at least from my point of view in TCAPs, that we do one thing, right? And then the next year is something totally different. We're on to the next. And it's tricky, right, to, to bring that stuff into the classroom when you're only talking about it for six PLCs a year, right? So those constant themes. And I would love to see, as like a veteran teacher, right? So I like to think I have a grasp for what's going on, but if we could have these themes and then somebody, you know, it'd be relevant for somebody like me at 25 years, but somehow to work in those new teachers, right? So we're all going to that, that consistent goal. We're trying to achieve the same thing, but they're not having to jump in maybe at, at a veteran teacher, teacher level where they've, they've dealt with this stuff for years and years, right? So kind of like keeping that in mind too, that you have a varying staff, and I think in the near future, we're going to have a lot of young staff, right? Or at least new to TCAP staff coming into the district. Like, how do they fit into this plan of PD to make it relevant for all, but yet like an end goal? I mean, that would be just awesome if we had something that from year to year was the same, so we didn't feel like we were jumping from one ship to another, right? And, and that, I guess, would be my take. So I like Jesse when you said focused. Yes, I literally wrote that. Yes. Like, that would be great, right? Something that's relevant, that's focused, that we can continue to work on from year to year. I mean, it doesn't have to be the same thing every year, but you know, it ties back in some way. So maybe it's the great, I, I don't know, you know? But that's my hope, is that moving forward, that's what we're going to get.
What was the apprentice?
So the reading apprenticeship stuff was put on by WestEd, I believe, ISD from Detroit area, somewhere downstate. It had tons and tons of research, but it mostly focused on reading strategies. So it, it allowed staff in all content areas, so it wasn't just an ELA training, right? As a social studies teacher, as, as a science teacher, as a math teacher, right? Going in and how does literacy, how can we improve literacy across the board in all subject areas and kind of breaking that stereotype that, well, this is an English class, so why are we reading? Right? Like incorporating those skills across the board, right? Spanish class, you name it, every class. And then we worked on those for several years, those specific strategies and how we were incorporating them and like sharing lessons and what we were seeing from students and that type of stuff. And then, you know, just as, it's a public school system, so as funding kind of went away, that just kind of tapered off.
Yeah.
Did TCAPs, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, there's nothing like following carrot.
I was just going to say, did TCAPs feel like it had achieved its goal in that regard with the literacy back then? Is that part of it as well?
Yeah, I don't, I can't really speak to that. I don't, I didn't, I wasn't on those decision-making crews. I, you know, it just, it just kind of dissipated after a few years. And it doesn't have to be that, just, you know, something that has some, some clear themes would just be fantastic and consistent and relevant and focused.
So in your view, does the plan for this coming year with the CKLA kind of hit on all of those notes for you and tie to our, we have a current strategic plan that we're the tail end of, we're about to, you know, try to launch a new one, but, you know, are you all, both of you, seeing the, the plan for the next year to?
Well, I can speak more to the CKLA being in elementary. I, it's a, it's a big thing to undertake new curriculum as teachers. So of course, the content and the target, you know, focusing on that this year is going to be very important. I'm interested in seeing how it's going to go in the future though, because right now we do have new curriculum, so that's kind of an easy focus. And making sure that we have that scope and sequence, which tells us like, where are we starting? Where are we going with that? What, you know, what's the objective? But I, I do want to, I'm interested to see how this will go in the future when we're not adapting new curriculum, to ensure that we're not taking some new shiny thing on, because we have often done that. It's like, oh, look at this, and it's really great, but then you might not even hear about it later that year. You definitely don't hear about it the next year. So just making sure that it's relevant and that it's something that's going to stick in the district that we're going to continue to use is important.
I think that kind of goes back to Jesse's idea, the common theme that shows up in the classroom. And, and I think that's right. I'd also like to see something on addressing the kids that are the middle, kind of right there. If you were looking at a proficiency line, the kids are over it in some tests, and then the next year, they may be down. They're just back and forth across that line. Addressing that, and addressing kids that haven't made it to proficiency. How do we help these kids as we move them through the grades? Don't let them get too far behind. Are there other approaches that will work? And, and I'm kind of hoping that that too is something. And, and I don't know if that's outside your line of, of being the same message useful for all, but I think those kids are going to need attention. I'm, they do.
Your tier-one instruction is hopefully going to, you know, look at that and help with those, those kiddos that are on the cusp and those students that need it. And then when I was looking at, Brittany did a really great layout of CKLA. It looks like she's going to be, we're going to be looking at that tier-two instruction with the CKLA in the future. So that's what I like to see about that, is it really showed like, here we're first starting with that tier-one, right? Because adapting a new curriculum is a lot, and to learn it, and it's massive. So like really focusing and honing in on that, and then we'll start like building more with that tier-two intervention, because when you do it all at once, it can become totally overwhelming. So I feel like with the district's plan at this time and working with us, there is a good scope and sequence that's going to hit the tier-one and the tier-two. So both the, the people, the students that are, you know, in that mid-range to low range.
And I'd be really interested in hearing, depending on what the committee thinks, periodic reports back on how you think it's going, you know? Are there things that we can do to support? Because I think that it's not just enough to get sort of like a summary statement, but sort of like how's it progressing? You know, are there things that the community can do?
Well, I can tell you, I get reports all the time after every PD and PLC. I hear about it, but I, I have a great collaboration with this team, and so I, you know, I keep in constant communication. I hear about it, but I I have a great collaboration with this team and so I, you know, I keep in constant communication with them. But I mean, sometimes it's a text like, oh, this isn't going so great. Or I stop in and talk to Jesse and we talk about like how, I remember having this conversation, right? At the RSDD day, um, this last year of like, ooh, what can we do better? And that's where we talked about the scope and sequence and making sure it's relevant and making sure that teachers know like, where are we going with this? Because otherwise, it's hard to get them to buy in, because we have so much already. So we really just need to keep that collaboration and that communication and I feel like it's been working really well.
That's great. Yeah, and Dan and I have been meeting, um, like I met with the world language le- leaders, like, okay, so what's important for your area? Where do you guys wanna focus? They talk to their teachers. They're gonna do some stuff on technology, thinking about like, there's so much with world language on speaking and listening. And and how do we have a platform that's more consistent that allows our teachers and our students to use it? So like, that's their focus. Great. The art teachers, I met with them. They wanted to bring in a couple of visiting professional artists. They gave me a list. Emily and I are reaching out who can, and we're really trying to tie that August day and that November day to the same theme for those teachers. So that they've got, you know, six hours on that August day to sort of really launch into it, think about this, oh, where am I at with my practice? They do some work. They kind of come back at that November as a check-in and we're hoping, this was an idea that Chandra and I had, that because there's some consistency and both those dates are connected, that'll make that P that PL uh that PD more meaningful and relevant and more engaging. And the teachers will see, I'm getting a launch with it, go do some work, and then I get to come back in and check in with that expert and see, and my colleagues too, so.
I I concern of the EA too, and we're working on it with the collaboration, is ensuring that it's relevant for people outside of like, you know, the elementary classroom instruction, right? So there is also your specials teachers, your social workers, your, you know, behavior interventionists. There's lots of different positions that special education, um, you know, ELL, the the list can go on. But making sure that their PD and PLC is also relevant, because I have sat in, um, these professional developments so many times. And I see our social workers there that I'm thinking, whoa, like, what can we do to help support them? Because listening to how they're gonna teach reading, you know, in a classroom isn't relevant to them. So, um, we're gonna continue that, you know, conversation, but just making sure it's relevant for each, for each staff.
So I, and then, no, I took the CK LA in parentheses on this slide just just to be an example, right? Not all teachers to be getting what the elementary, yep. And I want to acknowledge that for the current year, that, you know, we're at the end of, but about a, you know, almost a year ago, where we're still piloting CK LA, there was the emphasis on reading last August, right? So this will be year two of the reading PD, right?
Yeah, and and a year two, it won't be as stringent as year one. In our year one with Reading League, as far as thirty five J grant, is that all edu- we have a hundred percent attendance for all educators. It was my understanding for that PD. So a lot of that, making that connection of what is relevant for art teachers, world language, PE teachers, uh, world, um, EL teachers, special ed, and social work. This year, we're gonna have much more specific PD, looking at those August dates and that November four, uh, for all of those groups. I've been working with, um, Misty, Tiffany and I are also gonna touch base. And then our EL teachers, uh, we've kind of reconfigured as far as the elementary goes, that we have, um, well, six EL teachers next year. A couple of being part-time, but when you have a bigger group like that, where we moved from two to, two to actually about five, um, then you can actually start a little more collaboration and professional development around.
And and Tisha, Shaggy, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was, I was just kind of reflecting too on both what Beth and Ben said about, um, kind of like the one-offs. Like this is our main one, right? But I'm thinking of me, um, who taught at Traverse Heights for a decade and got moved to a new grade every year. So I had to learn that curriculum every year. And while my strong suit is ELA, you know, I can pick it up, I can read it, I can, you know, a- and it's often the focus of the district. What I struggled with as a teacher was the math instruction and it was very hard for me to get that math PD or some support. Um, and so that's something I think we need to focus on a- as a district. It's like, there are other areas that, you know, teachers would like to grow in. Um, and so providing those opportunities to to do that would be really important too. A- as you can see, our our focus has been ELA. But, um, like Ben said, you know, we have new teachers that are coming in that may not have gotten the professional development for the current math curriculum we're teaching, so how can we help support them after they've missed all that? So there is some growth to do there, um, but that was just another thought I had.
So for this coming August, just to try to wrap this up, do we have specific plans for those different kinds of teachers? Like, um, you've got the different content areas plus the specialists.
We do. Yeah, we're working with content leaders and department leaders to build that PD. I think some of, so some of it specifically CK LA, like, um, when we do that initial training, we are gonna want, you know, our our EL teachers and our special ed teachers as part of that, right? Because they're gonna be teaching that curriculum also. But like I mentioned, outside of that, when we look at social work for sure, Misty has a a the PD plan for the entire year. And then I work with, and Jesse does also, are are also the specials teachers when we talk about art. This is just mainly for, um, for elementary, we look at art and PE.
And then the secondary art and music teachers, what would they get at that time?
Same, they usually meet K twelve.
Yep, and that's what I've been going through a meeting with. I met with the world language, uh, leaders last Thursday. I met with the art leaders last Wednesday. I've got a meeting this week with the PE secondary leader. And so we just sort of go through what secondary with the content targeted is not, they're not all together at all, right? Like, social studies is gonna be working with some DBQ stuff, because that's some writing that they've been working out with. And wanting the middle school and the high schools to be more aligned and more intentional with that. Math is gonna do some, um, making thinking visible, some, um, building classroom stuff. English is gonna do vocabulary. So they're all sort of separate. There's not one focus, because it really is designed to be around their subject that they're teaching for secondary, so it's like a lot of different groups. Counselors group too, so. I appreciate the collaboration, the input that the teachers had in this process this year. And, um, I can, just one thing to follow up with what Beth asked about, um, was the teacher feedback. So are there teacher surveys at the end of the August week? Just to get their, you know, more comprehensive quantitative feedback on on the PD and whether to fill their expectations and so on.
PD is really good at making surveys, I'll just tell you that. And and I share it, I share it out with Jesse and Dan. I do do, um, surveys a lot to get the the touch. Um, because sometimes I hear from people and I'm not sure if it's the minority or the majority, right? So I'm trying to figure that out. So, um, I would be happy to collaborate with you guys in making some kind of survey and and discussing that too after that.
That's a good point. Are you the noisy one or do you represent?
Yeah, and and I, I mean, as a board, we would obviously defer to you all. One limitation is that the TCEA represents, what, eighty percent of our teachers? So would we be missing twenty percent? You know, that's something for you all to evaluate if you need a district-wide one. But however you wanna do that, that might be valuable. That would probably be. Yeah, and I would just say this last slide was just sort of showing you the team that we meet with throughout the year, our content teacher leaders, principals, Dana, myself, and then the instructional coaches. But Chandra's not wrong, like, it it takes a whole teamwork effort to make all of this. We're trying to meet the needs of hundreds of professionals who are all at different points in their career and are teaching all in sometimes very unique situations, right? We have one full-time French teacher in the district, right? How do we make sure she has high-quality professional development in the midst of all of that, right? And and these guys are awesome, awesome with collaborating with us, with giving us feedback. It's same with like, I hope us one saying to them like, hey, help us figure this out or what did they say about that? Or, um, that's been a huge, huge value add for this, so thanks to you guys.
One thing I'll add for the board to think as, um, we have new ISD leadership coming in. Like, you know, that that's a big piece of this is, you know, Ben had mentioned in the past, like ISD support. And, you know, that's one of the things that we're trying to get more focused on. You know, the, one of the hard parts we have is because our ISD is five counties. And trying to say, okay, this district's working on this, but this district's working on that. And so we are 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 trying to engage more conversation like on the RSDD day. You know, of of the truly that pattern of needs of what we're trying to do is met. Because they do have some financial resources that we don't to be able to help accomplish that. So, um, you know, in your ventures with other board members from the ISD and others, like, that's important for us to continue.
Yeah, so this year, given that change of leadership, do we have the ISD delivering, plan to deliver that November?
No, Jesse and Dan are are working with them and I think again, that's something that we're trying to find some, you know, uh, ways to bring more focus to some of the things that we're trying to do. You know, in the past, there there has been, um, I wasn't here. So like, you know, when the, when Journeys was done, the rest of the ISD went to CK LA. And TCAPs was the only one that went Journeys. So there was no ISD support in all the PD, all of that for the curriculum when that was adopted. So, you know, that's that's part of the, you know, I think for a long time, there was a bit of disconnect. You know, I think we've come a long ways with that and that's something that we wanna try and continue to to narrow down that, you know, that we wanna get the support that we need as well, knowing that they also have other districts. But we make over forty percent up of the students in the ISD, so that's an important piece to this mix for us.
I think that goes back to both Jesse and Ben's point of not chasing a new shiny something, but finding those common through lines and what's important to all kids and how can we shape that for the whole ISD.
Okay, and we're ready to move on to virtual learning. Okay, so, um, just some new happenings with virtual learning. And we also wanted to take a little time to have, I brought Jen Choak here, principal at Traverse City High School, to share a little bit about how things are going at the Compass Center. She's got some data for you guys and some good stories. And then next to her is Mr. Ryan Ranger, as we are kicking off next year a fully virtual middle school, um, opportunity for TCAPs students. So he's gonna talk a little bit about that, but, uh, Dan wanted to jump on the virtual train and talk about elementary virtual learning.
Uh, the forgot about, yeah, we do have an elementary program, so I just wanted to touch base real quick. Uh, every year we have five to ten kids that are part of this program, enrolled for various reasons, uh, for that choice for their family. But we do support it, um, asynchronous learning, so they do the modules and and learning guides through Lincoln Learning. They've been fairly successful as far as the students that take it. Sometimes we see a varied success, but the majority of kids that are participating in this program are completing the modules. Um, and then we also have Rhonda Bush, so that's kind of that same idea as what we're trying to do in Compass. That we do have an actual support person that the families and students can go to with questions and and help with with any learning that needs to take base. Rhonda's a retired teacher here from TCAPs. She does a fantastic job. We we talk to her on a monthly basis to see if the students are being successful, if coming back face to face would be a better plan. It's a fairly small program. I don't know if we have any questions about that.
Yeah, Lincoln, I just remember Lincoln Learning. I mean, we've been using that since COVID twenty twenty, right? And and, uh, I think there's been some ongoing evaluation about whether that's the best virtual, um.
There are not, there are not very many elementary options. Um, and this is one that across the state is, you know, uh, generally been liked and and not perfect by any means. But but definitely one that, um, they've found that, you know, it, the system works pretty well and it doesn't crash all the time. And, you know, you have some of those at the elementary level that have been pretty bad, to be honest. So we've had relatively good success with those families that have chosen that.
Right, yeah.
Five to ten kids.
Right now we have six.
Six, okay.
So, but yeah, the, i- is that, I mean, it's far fewer than what we had in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one and in twenty twenty two. And actually, I think we've just kind of got lost in twenty three, twenty four, didn't even hear about this, so.
Well, you know, we really don't promote it a lot. You know, I mean, there is two different approaches you could take. There are K twelve cyber schools across the state that could set up. You get a lot of people that, um, maybe are, um, hybrid homeschoolers is the best way I can explain it. Um, you know, that they use these and and have that and maybe supplement in their own way as their family, you know, wants, those kind of things. And and really, um, we haven't ventured into this deeply to try and and promote it, to recruit that, if you will. It's just, I mean, in my opinion, it's so tough, right? If an elementary student, as far as socially, I mean, these are six. I bet you, if you were to sit down with each of these families, every one of them has a unique circumstance on why they're doing it. Whether they're traveling all the time for figure skating is one of them, or there's an illness at home or. So we we definitely, as Dr. Van Wagner said, don't promote this. And trying to learn how to read virtually, uh, obviously is super tough. So even the kids that are on there, we monitor very closely that if it's not working, we go semester by semester. We have that conversation with the families, as secondary does, uh, and try to promote coming back.
And and I feel like you've just hit the mark with that. I mean, that's exactly my perspective on this. To have it as a fallback for those families that need it, because otherwise they could be homeschooling. Um, and it does keep them connected to TCAPs for down the road.
They can still participate and leave all this.
Sports and everything, that's really important.
And you know, there there are abilities to ramp up and to do a hybrid kind of a of an opportunity. Um, I, you know, I think that we're learning, we learned a lot this year, as you'll see in our high school program. We're gonna learn a lot next year in our middle school program. And I think when we get very comfortable with that, it's maybe a conversation to come back and have on the elementary. But until we get to that point, just just with bandwidth of team and everything, we're we're not there. But, you know, there there are some interesting models out there, people that are using it in micro school concepts and some things. If you look at, like Beth said, some of the research, if you look at, there's some interesting concepts that public schools are doing with people that just wanna choose more of a of a home route, you know, but but and maybe a drop in, you know, drop in center that has a teacher there to work with them. Um, but again, there's there's a real capacity to build like we've built with Compass, you know, and and, you know, we're just not there yet to even have that conversation.
Do these kids take the same testing?
They do. They come into the schools and Rhonda practices the test.
Okay, that's interesting, because that way you can kind of begin to evaluate.
It is a requirement for all of our virtual students, even all the way through the high schools, that they have to take the same. Some of those, I mean, a lot of that state testing is required and if these students who are enrolled with us don't take it, we won't hit our compliance, our ninety five percent that we need to assess, so.
And if some kids are just really struggling, whether it's chronic absenteeism, is that part of when you counsel them? Is this one of the things that you discuss?
It has not been so far, that we've not gone there at the elementary level. Again, high school level, we've had conversations with Compass on it. Um, middle school, we're just going to start, so, but elementary, no, we have not.
Sure, I understand.
All right, so our middle school virtual learning. So I'll let you know that just, uh, this kind of came out of what we've seen as a growing need in this area. Um, and Jen really can attest to this as holding the high school program, um, a lot of phone calls, a lot of people reaching out, a lot of people requesting. We do have a few middle school students currently, um, at, who are students at West or East, who are fully virtual due to a lot of different circumstances. Um, and we wanna keep these kids connected to learning. We wanna keep them moving forward and developing their skills. As Dr. Van Wagner said, our our goal is actually to get these kids back in person and give them those experiences. However, we just, we don't want them to be so far away that when they try to make that bridge, it's really, really difficult. So we're, we're really thinking this can be a nice middle ground to keep our kids connected. Um, so I'll let Ryan talk a little bit about some of these high-level bullet points and and what he's hoping over at East. I will tell you, we did decide to do the lab at East instead of West for capacity to be, you know, transparent. Ryan's got a great staff, he's got counselors. To have, what we've learned with the high schools, to have all of those kids together in one spot really allows Jen to staff it and to focus on it. And to, you know, we've got a full-time teacher whose job is just to oversee those best kids in that program versus, okay, I got five kids online and I'm teaching a hundred in person and I'm doing, you know, it was, it's too much to spread it out, so, um.
Yeah, no, and we're excited at East Middle School to have this opportunity, right? Um, and we're gonna learn a ton from Jen and her staff, um, which I'm sure you'll hear more about, a lot more about. I don't have all of the specific details. We're still kind of, um, getting some things figured out, but I can share some things with you. Um getting some things figured out, but I can share some things with you that um we do have a designated lab area. Where that's gonna be located, we're still in discussion about, right, and and working that through, but um we will have a space designated for those Compass Learning Kids. The vehicle will be a cellus, uh the same as what um the high school is offering as well, so that's nice, it's not Lincoln Learning. It's gonna be consistent with what the high school's um going with, we do have staff signed up for training um to attend that in late June. Um that will be our teacher, um one of our assistant principals is going to go, um that's gonna oversee the online learning program, but. Um so we're getting some of those pieces in place, we do have a certified teacher, as I mentioned, that's gonna be trained, um he will be responsible for the two way communication. We're also looking at having um a caseload teacher for special education students that might need access occasionally um to that. So we'll have an hour or two designated for that time as well, um thinking what else? Right now, numbers are small, but we're anticipating growth, much like what you're gonna hear about from the high school. Um when I say small, probably about ten right now that are expressing interest, um but I know Jen just mentioned that. She's got a few coming my way, um that she's gonna refer to me, so again, in line with what Dan was saying, Mr. Ty's worth. They do have full access to TCAP's resources, um not just the athletics, the music and things like that, but it might also be like counseling, social work. Whatever it is they need, right, um we want these kids to have access to. Figuring out the in person courses as needed, that's that hybrid schedule, right, so when kids need to. Maybe participate, or maybe they want to participate in a PE class, just to get some energy out, but then wanna uh unwind. A little bit with the online, um just whatever, whatever fits their needs best, those are all individual. Uh basis and discussions with those families, so um and we're also gonna have flexibility with our transportation, um so if a kid can't stay all day. Um we'll work with Beta and what that's gonna look like, um so again, it's a very new um process for us. In terms of the Acelis and what the Compass Learning Center is gonna look like, we're very fortunate to be able to learn from Jen and. Um their successes and also some of their challenges, right, so we're gonna, we're gonna learn from those and face our own, I'm sure, but. We're gonna have successes too, so we're excited about that.
So do the kids have to come on site to use the lab, or can they use it from home?
They can use it from home, right?
Home, um the Acelis programming, currently we have it set up where students need to come in for their midterms and their finals. In order to take those, so we can have some academic integrity there, um but we find that a lot of students do come in if they're struggling. And that mentoring piece with the two way communication really encourages them to come in, and so I think that's one of the best benefits is when those students can come in. They feel connected to the teachers and staff and then some other programming and wraparound services, so we encourage them to come in. But um we had some students that started to come in all day, we found that was a little too long for them to sit there on a computer and try to do online, we're like. Maybe two to three hours, yeah, that's where the flexible transportation comes in and helps them out.
But I thi- I think you speak to something really important is that relationship side, right, that they're able to build with that, um with our certified teacher. You know, just somebody they can trust and go to for open support.
And then the other questions are kind of related, one is if a student is struggling, say with math class. Can they also take the Acelis math class comparable and and have them augmented each other? That's one, and the second question, Jesse's shaking her.
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet, yeah.
We don't do summer school, so kids who've not been successful, you know, they can't use it. Is there any plan to have in effect an online summer school?
Well, we do summer school for our high school students, so and we use a cellus for that and we're running that out of the same lab at TC High. So any of our high school students who are off track for graduation, um are able for free, we offer um programming for them to. To earn credits and get themselves back on track, and that's staffed by um teachers who are at any of our secondary buildings, it's primarily. Teachers who are at West Senior High and Central High School and TC High who teach that, cause they're familiar with the courses, but we do have the five week program that runs in July.
And they would be familiar with the curriculum so that they can bridge back and forth, which would be kind of cool.
Would be.
Thank you, did you have a second question?
Well, that's that's the summer school and can you augment if you're having a struggle right now?
Um just in terms of the transportation flexibility, so how does that work for kids who live on the west side of the district versus the east for the location? Being an east middle school?
Yeah, working through Beta, right, yeah.
So if you live on the east, if you're zoned for east side, you get a.
Yeah, you would be able to go to a TCAP's bus, but if you're on the west side, your transportation would have to be better.
Is there is Betas, like, other rep system exhaust, is it exhaustive enough, okay?
And even, and I believe even the east side would have to use Beta, I mean, they could get them to school or they could pick them up from school on a route, but. If they were to. If it's not a full day, what what's gonna be interesting is, you know, we've we've talked a lot about. With middle schoolers, how many of them need, you know, there's there's nobody at home, whatever, like how how much more? You know, are they gonna need to be there all day versus not, we don't know that answer, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. Versus high school maybe has a ride, is able to drive, you know, and and so I think that's something that when. When Ranger and I walked the building last week, we just were, you know, we don't have that answer, um we're gonna find out, you know, so um. You know, we're the, we're the only one at this point in the the northwest region that's doing this. Um so, you know, in other places that, you know, if it's a district that's six square miles, that's easy, not a district that's three hundred. That's not that easy, you know, um so it'll just be really interesting to see logistically how those kind of things end up working out.
How how is TCAP's, uh do they get full tuition from the state?
We do, we get the full, we get the full foundation for the students, um everything, they're a full fledged student in every way of services they provide. And our funding that we get is provided, so. And so they're, and the other thing that is with this, they're able to get breakfast and lunch, you know, they qualify, all, you know, with.
But it's only virtual, right?
Never, I know, it it's real, it's not a virtual, it's not a virtual breakfast or lunch, until the Star Trek, you know. Food creator, you know, comes out, we're not there yet, but but uh but they, like I said, they'll have every opportunity that a face to face traditional student has.
So I'm just trying to refresh, I'm trying to refresh my memory on Acelis, because during covid, we had the Lincoln Learning for K through five. We had something else for secondary and it wasn't Acelis, yeah, so so bring us up to speed on how do we pick?
A year ago, we started like, I think Jen and her team really started to look statewide and talk to uh different alternative ed, you know, schools, high schools. Taking a look at success that they were having that they felt was comprehensive enough, but students were able to navigate, and so we really kind of started out piloting. You know, Acelis from that standpoint, um and and I've had a really, really good feedback with it and good success. So at this point, we'll be in year two of of, in fact, I think, did we not use it at the very tail end of?
Used it for Summer Academy last year to pilot it and try out the features to make sure that it would be what we wanted and. What everybody, the feedback we had was true, so it's nice because there's a lot of different um supports that are built into it. With the different levels that we can pro- like set students at, if they're doing credit recovery, if they have an IEP and doing more tuned learning. If they want an honors course, and then there's a lot of supports built in that has been working really well for our students and staff to use that platform.
And and Ryan, you mentioned you're anticipating about ten kids next year.
To start. When 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 Jen shares the numbers of growth they've had at the high school, I don't know if we'll see it to that extent, but we do anticipate growth. As word gets out, right, um even word of mouth wise, so yes.
And we've staffed this with one full time teacher, and so that gives us the capacity to go up to forty um students. And then if we get more than that, then we're gonna have to relook at staffing and support for that person, we have an LOU that we've. Um worked really hard with the union to figure out, like, this is a different job than the other jobs that our teachers do, right, they don't have. They're not delivering the curriculum, nor are they grading the curriculum, um they're supporting it, and what does that look like, and they're doing these two way communications. And so we've sort of landed on a a caseload of forty being um a full time FTE, so that's what we're starting with, and then we'll see where we go from there.
And then how many kids did you have this year, which I guess you would consider your pilot?
This next year will be our first, it will be our first.
Right, so the Acelis pilot, that was a TC High.
If a student wanted to take a a foreign language in middle school, could they take it through that?
Through Acelis, we do have, there's Spanish offerings, yes.
But if they wanna take German or French.
Believe those are in the course catalog.
They're available on Acelis, we we currently don't offer them.
Some of them still do Michigan Virtual for those one off courses, that's what the high schools, we still, like, we have, I know, we've got a student at one of our high schools who's taking Chinese. And they're doing it through Michigan Virtual, the thing with Mister Michigan Virtual is they provide us the certified teacher, we don't have a teacher in our district who's certified. In Chinese, right, so that sometimes is a barrier for us, um and so that's, and it it works well with the clearinghouse, there's other reasons why. At the larger two high schools, we, and you guys have a few kids doing Michigan Virtual classes at the middle school for a variety of reasons. It could be because, and you have a kid doing French, I think, cause there's not any French classes, but there is French at the high school. So that makes sense to prepare that kid, um we also just wanna be cognizant about like, what programming do we have and are we setting these students up to be successful? Like, as we heard from the public comment, like, if you're taking this this year and you're still gonna be with us another year, do we have course offerings that makes sense for you to continue your learning? Right, we don't wanna offer something that would kind of put a kid down a road that has a dead end at it, right?
So at the moment, both of our traditional high schools have French on the.
One has French, one has German.
Yeah, 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 French, I was gonna say on the east side, Central High School, German on the west side, and then Spanish on every cross of the district, so. At least having those three foreign languages and offer um at the school level would make sense, right?
And it would be.
At least Spanish across the board and then.
Virtual, you have the option for the kids to be, get ready earlier for that, yep. And then if you have the one off that wants to do Mandarin or Japanese, then the virtual options, fully there through virtual.
I totally get that, I mean, clearly, we just want kids to come to school, you know, in some way, shape or form and graduate. In our core courses, but I do love how TCAP's does go up to year six, I mean, that's really phenomenal in Spanish and. German at least, I'm not sure about French, but.
French does as well, yeah.
Okay, so I mean, that that's incredible, we do have those teachers at our high schools, they've been keeping five and six.
Yeah, and I do stand corrected, it looks like there can be in middle school, German, French and Spanish, so.
Great, so that's in alignment.
What about sign, American sign?
Yeah, so is not.
Yeah, that's one that we have struggled to staff, um we've also seen struggles on accepting that um on student transcripts for colleges. Because it doesn't have all three components of a world language course written, speaking um and listening, those are the three, there's no. A lot of colleges actually don't consider that one a world language course, um so it it's something um. And we've also struggled to staff it to be transparent, we've had a sign language teacher position posted for years and years, and um I think the teacher that. West Senior High who's doing a fabulous job is not actually uh highly qualified in ASL, is highly qualified in English, I believe. So, yeah. Um alright, so let's hear a little bit from Jen about her year at the Compass Learning Center.
Well, we have um expanded to really try to create the most flexible scheduling for our students. In order to meet their needs and remove barriers, so we obviously have our hundred percent in person, then the hundred percent online, and then the hybrid model, so. A few numbers, I mean, we started with seventeen and we are at a hundred and sixty two online, so I do expect that you will have some growth there, be ready. Um and we still have a pretty robust in person as well, that has changed a little bit with the I, with incorporating a little bit of the hybrid. So each hour, we have four hours a day, um we do have a s- uh one hour dedicated for online students, um but they have to, they're considered in person. They have to be in school, in that classroom with the certified teacher, and that has helped to fill gaps in their um their transcripts. When they come to us, their transcripts are kind of all over the places from whatever life has thrown at them, and so that has really helped with that, so. Last year, we had about a hundred and thirty students total, and now we currently have about two hundred and seventy total. And that falls under the umbrella of all these programs, and it's sometimes hard to get the exact number of who's in person, who's online, because. One of the nice things about this is the students do have that option to go between the two when when they can, we have students that have been online. That now are in person, we have students that are in person that now need, are online because of I, you know, a a bunch of different circumstances. Um and this has also increased our graduation um numbers, last year we had about thirty five, we had projected. Um about fifty, we have about sixty five that are graduating this year and finishing up, and we had eleven more from last year that walked and are finishing up. And that's due to this, um programming, it's due to eighteen credit diploma offering, um and just a really amazing staff. That has been flexible this whole year to support all these students, um so we've done this through the CLC lab, which we were just talking about. We've also taken on some SOS lab students and helped support them, um and provided some wraparound services for those students. That are there and it's just another safety net for these students that may just need another, a different option. Um and then our incredible staff, like I said, they have been working, working very hard and been flexible. To support all of these changes in our growth, going from seventeen students online to a hundred and sixty two, and then our numbers just growing. And it are, their jobs have, they've stepped up at every turn um to make this happen, because they're dedicated to these students. So these seven um in person teachers also are really interwebbed into the online and the CLC lab, they're teachers of record, they're called in to help students. That need help on a math test or um an ELA where Mr. Livinggood's in there and can help coordinate all of that as well. And they are stepping up to be mentors and doing two way communication, a lot of that is helping the students to be able to feel more comfortable when they come in and make that connection. And some of those students are gonna, looking to be in person next year, um so that has worked really nice, um and it's. A pretty unique program to be offering those three and to have students be able to be flexible between all three. Um and then lastly, next year, we we applied for the um waiver for um four days a week for in person, and our staff has been dedicated. To really working on creating a schedule for our in person and offering that to the online all TC HS students. Um providing ways to can connect with the community and increase their post-secondary goals, so they have ways to bring community in, our students going into the community. And they've set up those, um they've been working and they have a whole calendar that will be letting students know about an orientation. Um so we've created a lot of systems this year um to support students through various learning platforms, as I just said. Um I would say that probably one of the biggest parts of that again is the staff and coming together and wrapping, doing the wraparound. A lot of the online students utilize our social worker SSN, our guidance counselor, our teachers. So that they can access their education and remove those barriers, um we have had all sorts of success stories. And it's hard to put them into categories, cause every student comes in with a very unique story, um we've had um. A couple of special ed students that were at Central and they were with us last year, and they couldn't even walk into a classroom. Last year, we were able to get them in the classroom, but not very many classes, um they couldn't quite get to the work, there was still a lot of anxiety there. They actually come into the CLC and they're online now, um they come in two days a week for about four hours each day, and one of them has passed fifteen classes. And the other one seventeen online, and with those wraparound support services, going up and working with a special ed teacher, and it just works for them. It just works, and they get their breakfast, their lunch, all of that when they're there, um we have had students that come in that are older. Like eighteen, almost nineteen, hadn't been in school in a long time, um we actually started the student with a hybrid schedule. Just to kind of help ease ease her in, and she's actually doing full time now in person, doing Community Connections class. And has really come out of her shell, so we have all these different stories, they're all very unique, because they choose online for a dif- or unique circumstances. Um we learned a lot this year, and so we'll be hopefully helping and I'm excited to have a partner in this now that we can bounce ideas off of. But we really are improving our mentoring systems, the systems that we had to follow first were really, we started out with what we had to do mandated. Which was the two way communication, but what we've really found is that, sorry, um but what we've really found is that. The two way is where you reach out and make sure that. Um, but what we've really found is that the two-way is where you reach out, make sure that the student's doing what they need to do. But it really needs to be mentoring, um, checking in with them, seeing if they need anything beyond their academics, helping them schedule times to come in, all of those outreach, uh, outreach, um, services that we have. And our team, Livinggood, everybody in that CLC has worked hard to make those systems in place to make sure those students are being contacted and being supported. Um, we're looking for orientation for all students. Um, that'll look a little different for online, that first week of school. And then one of our first Friday activities is doing an orientation team building with our in-person students and, and any of the online that we can encourage to come. Um, and then increasing student connections to school and community. I talked about that a little bit with our Fridays, and our, our staff has worked hard, um, setting all of those up and creating a schedule for those students.
And all of those students have access to Career Tech Center. So she has some students who are virtual.
And MC.
Yep, and MC classes. So again, when we say they, these students get all the opportunities that TCAP students get, that includes some of those programmings that are unique to our high school students.
And one other statistic that I just want to throw out there, when we said TCAPs, we actually have forty-three students that came to us from out of district. That are in our three, forty-three.
Um, Jen, just remind us, what is the SOS lab, if you go back to the previous slide? Slide, what does SOS stand for? I don't know.
It's Save Our Students, so.
Thank you.
It is a, it's a kind of tutoring lab that is, it's a private LLC that, that runs, uh, here in Traverse City. And so, um, they've actually been partnered with another school district in the past, um, downstate. And so we're working with them to work with Jen for students, um, to, to be able to be a part of, of TC High.
Okay.
Um, rather than.
Do we use them this year as well?
Oh, we, we did a kind of a pilot partnership second semester with that. Um, gone well, um, but we, we're hoping that that expands, um, next year. Uh, they do have about two hundred kids, um, that they've had that are from our district and various districts. And so we're, we're trying to collaborate to work that to where it's not one that goes down to the Detroit area, but stays here from those resources.
Yeah, and then Jen, also, just the TC High enrollment, um, if you go back to that. I just, I mean, that's, that's really, you know, massive. And you said sixty-five students are graduating this year? Was that just from Compass, or is that?
It's a combination. And again, it's, it is, I could give you the numbers, but it is hard to identify which ones were a hundred percent online in-person because they do go between, and I could break those down for you if you'd like, but.
That's fine. I mean, to me, I, you know, I, I just want to get kids going to school and finishing school. So, you know, as we've discussed, you know, I'm, I'm nervous the younger the kid is about having all virtual learning. But I think that's a collective concern here. Um, but, you know, to get high school kids, you know, have doubling your TC High graduation, you know, having attended those for years now, I mean, you know, we would get, you know, usually a class of about thirty, thirty-six. And, and so that's really exciting to see that many more kids, you know, succeeding and graduating.
Yeah, it is exciting. I think for our staff that's been pretty veteran at Traverse City High School and with the idea that, you know, our backbone is relationships and having these kids in there, this has been a huge shift for us to pivot in our minds what is best for students. And it's allowing them access to the, the education in whatever form it meets, and then us figuring out what barriers and hoops we need to jump through to make that happen. Um, and so that's been a huge shift, but the numbers speak loudly to it's, it's being successful. We have some tweaks to do, but it's definitely being successful and successful.
And I think it's about us as a district giving Jen and her team as many tools as possible. It, it's interesting when you hear her say, like, I asked her to, like, how many are just virtual? How many are, she's like, Jess, they, they don't, it's all of it, right? It's whatever that kid needs at that time, right? She's got kids who, for nine weeks, were all virtual, and then they decide to come in person. And then the next nine weeks, they've got two classes online because they're not, you know, only a few kids need them, so we're not offering a section of that. And then the rest of the day, they're there in person. So it really, she's got an environment in which it's able to sort of respond to what the kid needs, um, to get them to progress towards, you know, their diploma. Um, and that's been really cool to see. Um, a lot of work, though, for her and for her, her team, so.
And a lot of support from the district we've had, so that's been working all together.
I share your concern with kids going online, or being online, but my hope is that we'll pick up some of those kids who asked to homeschooling, that just, for a variety of reasons, a school day just does not work for them.
Or, or, or no schooling.
Or no school, right, correct, correct.
I mean, there are enough, there's daily, thirty thousand kids. We're just not sure.
We just don't know, absolutely. So that, it, it actually makes me really excited that we have an elementary option because I've seen so many kids just go.
Yes.
And the wonder of where are they? What are they doing? So.
But we're, there's no doubt in my mind, we're on the absolute right track with this program.
Yeah.
You know, no doubt.
So, um, I, I just want to encourage you all to, to celeb, like, we need to take this moment and celebrate. I know we have that next on our agenda, so it's a good segue, but really, um, you know, when kids succeed, we all succeed, so. Um, just a very quick question I had about the improving mentoring systems and the student connection to school and community. Uh, just, you know, uh, triggered in my mind, like, a question of, do we have big brothers and big sisters coming into TC High?
We do not.
We do not, okay. Is that something that we've looked at in the past? So you're talking about mentor, you know, mentoring within TCAPs, but I know we have big brother, bigs coming into other TCAP schools, so.
We put the mentoring on the, um, on the slideshow. It was more for our staff members have to do mentoring with the students that are virtual and with our in-person to make those connections. But we are always looking for adults that are, you know, qualified and, um, to come in and be mentors to our students because the more, at lunchtime would be a great time for that. Um, because our kids don't have a lot of options. And I, anytime they can connect with an adult in the community would be great. So I'm open to the opportunity if we can make it happen.
Can I ask a question about the middle school?
Sure.
Um, just being in elementary and knowing some truancy concerns. Um, I'm thinking in particular of a student has huge anxiety, and she's in fifth grade going into sixth grade. I have brought up the possibility of this. Are there conversations that you can have with, like, social workers or administration at those buildings to try and catch those kids to say, like, hey, this is an opportunity? Because we'd rather have them in virtual than not in school at all.
Absolutely. I think once we start really nailing down where we're at, communicating with them and getting a, some communication out to families, again, it's a slippery slope. Like, how much are we sharing versus, um, letting it be a slow build? But those are exactly the kind of kids that might be strong candidates for programs like this, right? And we don't want to lose them, um, to truancy issues or things like that. I mean, for lack of a better term, I think keep your hooks in them a little bit and, and try to coax them back in, right? Is, is the hope. So, nice suggestion, I, I do.
Yeah, I can think of a kid in middle school, at your school.
Yeah.
That could benefit from it.
And I'll, I'll just go out on a limb here and, and say, I would be interested in seeing Compass and EMS in action in the new school year. Maybe we can have a board opportunity for us to tour.
We'll make TC High one of our visits.
Yeah, TC and.
Yeah.
And EMS too.
Yep.
I think would be good to see.
Yeah, we'll be knocking it out of the park.
We can get a little shuttle van. We get our.
Give us. Ranger's that guy playing the home field, uh, a homerun.
We can use our, we can use our AP shuttle van.
Yeah, yeah, I like it. You could just go EMS. You can't go to both.
It's not that bad. Its range isn't that bad.
Yeah.
Okay. And right along then, celebrations and successes?
Um, so we, we, we will, we have quite a few because it's the end of the year. And so there's so much good stuff going on with twelve days, twelve days, Mr. Senator.
Well, eleven more mornings.
Eleven more mornings. Um, uh, so we will, uh, go through these for you guys, but feel free to ask Dan and I more details afterwards too, so.
Yeah, so kicking things off at Blair here, Catherine Wooden's first grade class. I've seen this project in other elementary school, schools. They decided to focus on science and the science projects they did throughout the year. So they use, uh, virtual company online. They have the kids make their books, and then they, they submit to the company, and the company then comes back with an actual, uh, hardcover book. So super cool project that helps highlight, uh, our science in elementary school.
Wonderful.
And then here is our choir program at Central High School. I mean, we, we know how amazing, especially these last few weeks, we've been able to hear lots of great concerts in our, in our students. But really, you know, high ratings across the state at all of their festivals and their competitions. We've had students who have been selected to be part of a very exclusive all-state choir. So just, I mean, our kids in these and our directors just do a phenomenal job of a top-notch programming for these kids.
And our Traverse City Optimist Club celebrating our fifth graders, uh, from each of our schools as part of their Youth Appreciation Day, specifically positive attitude, kindness, and goodness that they bring to all of their classrooms.
And then this is a photo of our West Senior High STEM students. But I know our Central students as well went on the inland seas and spent a day out on the Great Lakes doing some science. And that's a really fun program. They do a great job teaching the kids. They, um, I do know that the Central group locked out, I think they went on those days, it was eighty degrees. So that was nice. Although this day looks pretty nice for the West kids too, so. Um, and I think we have more kids going out today, tomorrow, from West, too. Their tenth graders are going on a visit, so really cool to use our local resources and expose all the kids to those.
And this is, uh, out of Cortade. This is Mr. Boyce's, uh, fifth grade class as part of their fantastic garden. We learned quite a bit in their nutrition and fitness meeting the other day. Mr. Rasho, in which he's probably been there a while, because I think the rose named after him from there in front of the school, uh, helps, uh, on a regular basis with the cart, with the garden as far as compost, but also provided the chicks that hatch, and the, the kids observe, do studies with them. It's a kind of a nice interactive program with our, our local community.
I told my granddaughter about it. She wants to go to Cortade.
You got a lot going on there.
Uh, and these are some of our business students over at Central High School. They, uh, won a competition, a branding competition. I'm really excited about that. And Ms. Harvey just does a phenomenal job just getting her kids out in the community and connecting with local businesses. So, um, they earned nine hundred dollars, uh, for winning that competition, so.
And shout out to our food service department, uh, specifically working with our, our local farmers. It is asparagus season. Um, so they were working this, uh, was out at Long Lake, just doing some, uh, samples as far as taste testing. And then the students got the vote if they were fans of asparagus or if they were not.
Do you know what the results were?
It looks like.
They're at the bottom.
Tried it.
Loved it, looks like it won.
Liked and tried.
I didn't put the picture in with the kid's dick and her tongue out.
Don't touch my yum.
It's all come around.
All right. Uh, let's see. And, um, this is, uh, at Central High School, they had, uh, Traverse City's mayor and Traverse City's city clerk come by after their AP golf exam and, and sort of talk to the kids about what does it mean to be in, in local politics? Uh, what are those services and those rules look like? You can see there, they're using the lab, the Innovation Center, that, for that presentation. Again, it, I've been over there a few times for different things, and they are using that space a ton for a ton of different things. Um, and so this was a great opportunity to show off that space and also, um, hear about some of our local officials.
And Cortade again partnered with, uh, employees from Costco. They came over every Wednesday, uh, to read with kids. And then at the end of the program, uh, donated several books. So thanks to our friends at Costco for their, their time and resources.
And this is Nate Brush's, uh, class at West Middle School. He's our STEM teacher there. I think some of you guys were able to tour some of his stuff. And, I mean, he always is doing really cool stuff, um, with his kids. But, uh, this is when they were building their own roller coasters and, um, doing that. So high engagement, pretty cool, hands-on activities for kids.
And this is an annual, our annual all-city track meet, uh, put on by our, our LEAP. Uh, several of, all of our elementaries participated. It's a huge event. Uh, just a lot of fun and a lot of success.
And then this is some of our, our, uh, different publications. So this is our West Senior High newspaper. They won, um, a lot of different awards here at their competition. And then the next slide here is our East Middle School students as well, um, and their awards that they had won too. And I think there's a little video that we wanted to show you. It's short and it's pretty cool. It's the kids, they're watching the awards ceremony, um, live. And so, oh no, did you get it or no?
Download it quick.
Um, and.
You know what happens when secondary tries to one-up me?
It's a really cute video because Ms. Mackey knows. I, wait, and Jody knows they were about ready to win it. So she's taping other kids, and they're hearing all the schools. You know, they're calling up some Ann Arbor schools, they're calling up different schools. And they're, all the kids are just sitting there, and then they call East Middle School, and the kids just go crazy. It's a really cute video, so.
And they were what, one of four middle schools in the competition?
For the, for the MIPA, and then the Spartan Award, um, they were actually the only middle school. And there were four schools selected, and they were the only middle school, so pretty good stuff.
It's impressive.
Really impressive. And this is from Eastern Elementary, the Central High School's class of twenty-twenty-five that attended. Eastern Old Mission came back to visit our students at Eastern Elementary.
Can we see that video link in the lower right?
Let's see if your video works, Dan.
There we go. Oh my gosh, look at that video.
It's pretty fun, the, the seniors love it. They love to walk through the school. And I, a lot of our elementary schools do this, um, and the little kids, but, but our younger students love that too, so, pretty cool.
Is there a way to standardize that, I wonder? I know there's a lot of questions from different kids. I don't know, Maggie did it or not, but.
She has one scheduled this week at Long Lake. Yeah.
Yeah, they're cheering all.
Yep.
Cheering.
Well, they at least came over, and I know they stood on the sign.
Yeah.
I thought they all did that.
No, they don't.
No, it really is like the, the elementary school's the one who takes the initiative to, like, reach out and contact the kids. And then also you are organizing seniors who sometimes it's more difficult to organi-, it's easier to organize them when school's still going on, or seniors are done now. And so then it becomes a little harder to organize them to show up at the right time.
Yeah, you hope to get them at rehearsal. And then lastly, uh, congratulations our TCAPs employees for their twenty-twenty-five outstanding educator award is something that's for years have been partnered with TBA Credit Union and Northwest Ed. We had Ms. Hellman. I know she is over at Cortade. We also had Carrie Labonte, our German teacher at West Senior High, Kirk Rainey, principal at Blair, Charles Taylor, who works with our shared time with St. Francis and, um, Immaculate Conception. And then Betsy Wells, Administrative Assistant at Central High School. Celebration will be Wednesday, June fourth, at six-thirty PM at the City Opera House.
There we go.
Great, great. Any other items? And with that, um, our next cur-, board curriculum meeting will be Tuesday, July eighth, at eight-thirty AM at this location, Glen Williams Building. Um, and actually, I, sorry, I'm just gonna add in a little other item here, just to confirm, is eight-thirty on generally the first Tuesday of the month, I think? Still a good time for everybody?
We're not meeting in June.
Sorry, it's either the last week of the month or it's the first week of the month.
We have two in July.
Just depending on holidays, it just kind of how it felt, yeah. Right, so there's no late June meeting. Um, that's probably because of the July Fourth holiday week being closed for the administration office. But just to confirm, generally Tuesdays at eight-thirty AM are good for my fellow committee members and. Okay, so we'll keep it so. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.